Could be the tour.
I don't know.
What happens when the sun comes up?
So anyhow, I express a little dissatisfaction.
All right. We are on the air, folks, and welcome this nice chilly evening we have, icy evening. I'll call the meeting to order, and would you like to join us in the Pledge Allegions to the Flag?
Pledge Allegions to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mary?
Olson?
Here.
Collins?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Kellum?
Here.
Supinskey?
Here.
Silver?
Here.
Okay. First on the agenda is a special presentation this evening, and this is over a grant we are receiving, and I see Ange here, Brown, so I think she's probably going to present it, so.
Well, I should know.
Oh, okay. Oh, wonderful.
Good evening. My name is Grant Cyrus, and on behalf of Target, I am pleased to present a check for $7,000 to help support the River Rhythms Children's Performing Arts Series and the Art and Air Festival.
Oh, great. We want to thank Target so much for their support, and we're very proud of our concerts that we have every summer, and they seem to be growing and getting better and more attendance, and it's everybody working together, all the sponsors, to really be able to promote it and really put on a fun, happy summer for everyone in Albany. So we thank you, Target, for supporting our program.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Ange. Okay. Next is proclamation, and this is Homeless Persons Memorial Day. This is for December 20th, 2013. Whereas every member of society, including individuals experiencing homelessness, deserves the dignity of safe, decent, accessible, and affordable housing; and whereas winter poses extreme hardship for inadequately housed, low-income men, women, and children in Albany; and whereas in this season of generosity and sharing, citizens of Albany are encouraged to commit themselves to promoting compassion and concern for all people, especially those who are poor and homeless; and whereas in remembering those who have died without homes, the cause of ending homelessness remains urgent to prevent such deaths in the future; and whereas the shortest day of the year has been designated National Homeless Persons Memorial Day by the National Coalition for the Homeless and the National Health Care for the Homeless Council, and is recognized by cities nationwide. Now therefore, I Sharon Canopa, Mayor of the City of Albany, Oregon, do hereby proclaim December 20th, 2013, as Homeless Persons Memorial Day in Albany, Oregon, in recognition of the people who have died on our streets, in our emergency shelters, and in condemned or abandoned properties from ailments or conditions directly related to homelessness. I hereby ask all citizens to take a moment of silence in remembering those who have died homeless, and encourage our citizens to support local efforts to eliminate homelessness here. And witness whereof, I have hereunto placed my hand and caused the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed 11th day of December, 2013. And we have a memorial event that we hold every year in the City Hall Plaza out front, and that would be a week from Friday, December 20th, at 10:00 a.m. So everybody is welcome to attend that event, and it's a very nice remembrance, and the names are usually red, and a balloon is usually let go for every person that has died that's homeless in our area. So it's a very nice, nice little memorial event, so. Okay, thank you. Okay. Next for scheduled business, communication is the geocaching program, and I met with Visitors Association and Don Bacher on their new proposal, and it sounds wonderful. So, Don?
Good evening.
Do you want to spell your last name for the record?
I will do that. My name is Don Bacher, B. as in boy, A.C.H.E.R., and I live at 1650 Main Street Southeast here in Albany, 97322, if you need that. Mayor Canopa, members of the City Council, staff, and guests, my name is Don Bacher, and I'm here to report on two major geocaching events sponsored by the Albany Visitors Association. Geocaching is a real-world, outdoor treasure hunting game using GPS-enabled devices. Participants navigate to a specific set of GPS coordinates and then attempt to find the geocache or container hidden in that location. There are several types of geocaches, but the types I'll be talking about this evening are traditional and virtual. I'll explain further as I go along. You all should have received the handout I used during this presentation. The first Albany event was the 2013 Albany Historic Homes Coin Challenge. The kickoff event for this challenge was held on Saturday, July 27, which was also the day of the Albany Historic Homes Tour. The Internet page for this event are pages 1 and 2 in your handout. Coin challenges are common events in communities all across Oregon, and the United States, actually. Each challenge contains a specified number of containers hidden in a community, and the coordinates are posted on the website, geocaching.com. Geocachers come to the community, find the caches, fill out the event passport, and receive a specially minted geocoin. 300 coins were purchased using the Cathy House and the AVA logo as the design. You can see the coin on page 3 in your handout. Mayor Canopa also has one of the coins that -- she's free to pass around, so you can see. You can see the coin, okay. Page 5 shows you the demographics of where the cashers have come from since the July 27 kickoff date. As long as there are coins available, the challenge will continue. You can see they've come from all over Oregon, as well as Washington, California, and Massachusetts. Many of these persons have stayed in our motels, RV parks, and campgrounds, eaten in our restaurants, and purchased gas for their vehicles. This is Albany's first coin challenge, and as you read through the comments on pages 8, 9, and 10, you quickly understand the benefit of such a challenge for our community and its economy. The second major geocaching event this year was the Third Annual Albany Art and Air Challenge as specified on page 11. Geocachers that completed this event also received a specially minted geocoin. As this is a one-day event, we only ordered 150 coins. Again, a picture of the coin is on page 12, and Mayor Canopa has samples from this year as well as the past two years. Each year, we've used the city's art and air poster for the coin design. Unlike the Historic Homes Challenge, this event utilizes our businesses as locations for virtual caches. That means there is no container at each location, but the geocacher must enter the business and answer a question on the passport. Each year, we have used 15 local businesses as well as five non-business sites. The only businesses we've chosen to repeat each year are the Carousel and the Albany Museum. Pages 14 and 15 list the businesses and non-businesses, along with the questions used this year. I've also added similar lists for our first two years on pages 19 to 22. Each year, the event gets better, and we have more geocachers in attendance. A sampling of their comments are on pages 16 to 18. Like the Historic Homes Challenge, this event brings persons from all over the state, as well as Washington. This year, we even had a young couple from Germany that read about the event on the Internet and planned it as part of their vacation. We've had upwards of 200 persons participate each year, many of which have come for the meet-and-greet event prior to the Night Glow on Friday and stayed for the Saturday evening concert. Albany again benefits from their lodging, meals, and gas. In fact, we don't hand out coins until 3:00, so those that complete the challenge early get to eat lunch in Albany. Finally, the last page of the handout is a brochure put together by one of our local motels. They have agreed to provide special rates for geocachers. Word travels fast up and down the I-5 corridor, and Albany is developing a great reputation among geocachers. It's becoming the place to visit and the place to cache. Thank you for your support, and I'll entertain any questions that you might have.
Questions? Yeah, Ray?
This was presented at the Albany Visitors Association a couple months ago, and I said, you know, we've got to get this in front of more people to make a presentation on this, because this is one of these hidden gems that happens in Albany that most people don't have a clue as to what it is and why it works, and the fact that it does work and keeps on growing, I think, is phenomenal. So thanks, Don, for helping put it together, and anybody that's involved with it. I'm not involved with it personally, but I'm intrigued, so I may someday, so thank you.
Well, membership is free, so.
And were you going to talk about a future event, a large event?
Well, Sharon, if you -- I can, if you would like me to. If there's a reporter here, I would prefer that they not put this in the newspaper, because at the moment, it's secret.
Oh, okay. We can keep it secret.
But it is going out on television.
Oh, well.
Not to be a nudge, but, you know.
Yeah, no, we don't have to.
Okay. Well, just let it be known that there is a plan in the works to bring Albany's attention to the world, as it were. So as we get closer to -- well, I won't be able to tell you anything until at least 2015, so you have a ways to wait. But it's exciting, and...
Talking about a teaser.
I would be willing to talk with you individually, but I'm not sure I want it...
Sworn to secrecy, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Questions? Nope, it sounds wonderful.
And Mayor Canopa indicated that things that are presented at the meeting are the meeting's property, but I'd really like the coins back.
I think you can get those from Mary.
And if you want to get a coin, you can complete the challenge.
Oh, okay. Yeah, Mary, can you have those back? All right. Thank you so much, Don.
Thank you.
It's really exciting, so thank you for all your work on it. Okay. And Visitors Association, thank you also for all your work on providing this wonderful event, so thank you. Okay. Next, let's see. We have a quasi-judicial public hearing, and that's on tonight's agenda regarding planning file CZ-0313. This is a quasi-judicial public hearing regarding a zoning map amendment to reconfigure the size and location of the existing RM residential medium density, RS5 residential single family, and MUC mixed-use commercial zoning districts as presented in the ordinance and exhibits for planning file CZ-0313. The location of the property is 6150 Columbus Street Southeast. The applicant is Tri County Investments. I call to order this quasi-judicial public hearing at 7:28 p.m., and do any members wish to declare a conflict of interest? Okay. Do any members wish to report any ex parte contact? The only thing I will say is I did meet with -- from Tri County Investments, and it was not over this application, but it was over what their future plans are for that property, so, but it was not a part of the zoning. Okay. And does any members wish to report a site visit? And do any members wish to abstain from participating in the proceedings? And does anyone wish to challenge the City Council's right to determine this matter or the participation of any counselor in this hearing and decision? Okay. If you wish to testify, please sign in at the table next to the meeting recorder. And for all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards approval standards. Staff will describe or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Development Code that you believe apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the City Council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. Any continuance or extension of the record requested by the applicant shall result in a corresponding extension to the 120-day limit. Failure of applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. So at this time, a call for the staff reports. So Planner Melissa Anderson.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have a proposed zone change. This property is the Hinshaw Farm property, and this is a public hearing this evening. Now, the subject property is at the corner of Ellingson and Columbus Street, and the property is about 106 acres total. On the north side, there is the Oak Creek and Mennonite Village on the -- across the street to the east. There's a little bit of a delay on this. I'll just try to move forward. Well, this proposal is to reconfigure -- it's only approximately one acre of the 106 acres there, and it's to reconfigure the RM zone, the residential medium density zone, the RS5 single-family residential zone, and also the MUC mixed-use commercial zone. Finally caught up with me. Okay, good. And as I mentioned, the total acreage of the site is about 106 acres. And the applicant is Tri County Investments. Their agent is Sean Keys, and their engineers, multi-tech engineers, with Mark Grinz as the engineer, and the applicant and their representative are here tonight to answer any questions. The decision-making criteria is from our Albany Development Code for zoning map amendments, 2.740, criterias 1 through 5. And this process is a type 4 quasi-judicial rezone application because it's very site-specific. Public notice was mailed to property owners surrounding the property. It was also posted on the site, and the Planning Commission had a hearing on this proposal on November 18. They recommended approval with a minor adjustment to the map, and tonight, we have a public hearing for the City Council, and the final decision is before the council this evening. So the existing zone is this configuration of the mixed-use commercial, the RM, which is medium-density residential, and single-family residential zone. There is also the open space zone to the north. However, this proposal does not in any way impact that open space zone. And the Comprehensive Plan designation is the Village Center encompassing the mixed-use commercial zone and then Urban Residential Reserve. This area is also located in the South Albany Area Plan area, and the proposal to adjust this remains consistent with the vision for the South Albany Area Plan. And the proposed rezone is really just to reconfigure the mixed-use RM and RS5 zones so that it better matches the alignment of the layout of their proposed subdivision that would be coming forward. So the decision criteria is basically to be consistent with the Comprehensive Plan map, transportation facilities adequate to serve the use permitted in the zones, and the public utilities and services can accommodate the potential development, and the proposed zoning would satisfy the goals and policies of the Comprehensive Plan, including the South Albany Area Plan, and lastly, that the proposed land use and transportation pattern is consistent with the city plans. And the Planning Commission found that it is consistent with this criteria with one recommendation to make a minor map modification to remove the small portion of the remnant area right here, just to make the mixed-use zone connect up and eliminate that small section of RM. So the Planning Commission's recommendation was to approve the rezone with the conditions to modify the proposed zoning map, to eliminate that small section of RM zone, and to also provide legal descriptions to reflect the modification to the zoning map. And the applicant has done so. The map modifications were completed, and that's included as Exhibit A, as the revised zoning map, and Exhibit B, legal descriptions, which are exhibits to the proposed ordinance. And so the next steps, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer the questions as best I can. We will then open the public hearing. The applicant is here to answer any questions, and then the council can deliberate. The options would be to approve the proposal, deny, or approve with condition.
Sure. Okay. Questions? Rich?
Is the applicant happy with the change?
He'll be speaking. Yeah. They're coming up. Bessie, then, Dick?
Just to say, you said the map change is changing from the mixed use to get it into the residential. Is that correct?
Well, what it was is there was just this, just this small section here that of RM, yeah, RM, and so instead, to just connect up the MUC with the RS5, because it really doesn't, you know, have any benefit.
Yeah.
And it makes just a cleaner line for administering this, and it doesn't impact negatively in terms of what they want to do with that property.
It's just a shaded area, the little bitty thing, like a kind of a lot line adjustment type thing.
That's it, just to make it a cleaner outline.
Yeah. Understand that totally. Thank you.
So that silver becomes MUC.
Yes. And so with, you can see with the here, that that just makes a cleaner line around with the proposal. And with this one, it is slightly unique in that they have not subdivided this at this time, and it's all 106-acre property at this time. They do plan to subdivide in the future, so normally, our zoning map would align with property lines, but we don't have property lines to align with at this time, but there, this will align with what they intend, how they intend to subdivide the property in the near future.
All right. Okay. Thank you, Melissa. Would the applicant like to come forward, and please state your name and address, and make any comments you may have for the City Council?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, my name is Mark Grinz, G.R.E.N.Z., and I'm with Multi-Tech Engineering. Our office is at 1155 13th Street Southeast in Salem, and we're representing the applicants in this project, and we're pleased to get to come and visit you on this cool evening down here. So Melissa did a really good job with the staff report, and what this is, is a little, it is slightly different in that you don't have property lines, but what we, if you recall through the South Albany Area Plan process and the committee activities and stuff, it was envisioned that there would have to be some minor adjustments in some of these zoning boundaries that were set through the legislative process that the South Albany Area Plan did in order to make them fit with the actual development plans as they're coming forward. So, and in this particular property, one of the things that staff and that the plan envisioned was that the Oak Creek Parkway would connect to Columbus as far north as it possibly could, given the topography and the constraints we had. And so we've done enough work in the planning towards the actual development to know where the alignment of the Parkway would go, and then this twinkling just allows the formation of that block of MUC to now better match the future extension of Seven Mile Lane into the site and the Parkway coming from the north in order to make that property more beneficial and take advantage of all the different street frontages that we'll have. So that's the reason we're here. The adjustment that staff and the Planning Commission asked us to make was minor, and in fact, it's, some of that is actually roadway or roadway use purposes, so it doesn't really, it didn't really matter. So when the development comes forward, this will make a little bit more sense, but we wanted to get the zone change done first so that when the plan comes in, the plan, the designations in the plan and the way we configure the property and the different parcels and tracts and lots we have would match up to the actual zone. So that's the process. We think that we're doing it the proper, in the proper steps here, so, and we'll be before the Planning Commission here in just a few months with our plan. So if you have any questions, then me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions? Nope. Okay. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark.
Does any member of the audience wish to speak in support of the application? Does any member of the audience wish to speak in opposition to the application? And does any member of the audience wish to speak who is neither in favor nor in opposition to the application? Okay. And if there isn't any rebuttal, and let's see. And does staff have any comments over what was stated, testimony?
No, I'm fine with everything that's been discussed. I have nothing to say.
Okay. All right. So with that, I will close the public hearing at 7:41 p.m. And council, there is an ordinance that's on page 17. Would you like to have the first reading of it? All right. Okay.
This is an ordinance amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany zoning map, adopting findings and declaring an emergency for property located at 6150 Columbus Street Southeast.
I'll make a motion. The ordinance be read a second time and title only.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany zoning map, adopting findings and declaring an emergency for property located at 6150 Columbus Street Southeast.
Make a motion for adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Okay. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Any motion carried? So within five days of the decision, the Community Development Director provides written notice of the decision to the applicant and any other parties entitled to notice. A decision of the City Council may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals by filing a notice of intent to appeal not later than 21 days after the decision becomes final. All right. With that, okay, thank you, folks. Drive safely. Okay. Now we'll go back to public hearing. This one will be over setting the water rates, so this is on page, starts on page 4.
And I'm going to go ahead and step down so I can run the...
Okay. Should I open the public hearing first before he starts?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing. This will be setting rates for water use and repealing resolution number 6190, and the public hearing's opened at 7:44 p.m.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors. This presentation is a follow-up from the discussion we had back in November about water rates and staff's recommendation regarding water rates. So we want to talk about our current recommendation for a water rate increase. We want to share with you and also the public who may be watching, where does the money go? Make that connection, and then provide you with an update on our five-year running projection for water rates. So our current rate requirement. A year ago, we were before you with our projections, and at that time, we estimated that we would need a 5% rate increase January 2014. We've updated the revenue and expenditure forecasts, new information that we've had. You know, we're a year wiser now, and we're reducing that recommendation from what we thought was 5% down to a 3% rate increase. That 3% rate increase is estimated to generate approximately $350,000 over the year. So why is the rate increase smaller than we projected a year ago? There's a couple reasons. We've been very active in trying to control our costs. As you know, we refinanced our water bonds last year, saving us about $350,000 annually, which results in about $7.3 million... which results in about $7.3 million over the entire life of the loan. So we took advantage of better interest rates. We didn't extend the term. We kept the term the same, so it's not like we're just spreading the same cost over, so there is some real savings there with those annual savings. We also reduced, we've been reducing our operating costs. In 2012 and '13, we, we reduced our costs by 4%, and we're projected to reduce our costs an additional 1% this coming, this fiscal year that we're in here. This is a picture of our five years' history of our operating and maintenance expenses on an annual basis. These are expenditure numbers, not budget numbers, so that's actually what we really spent. And as you can see, last year, 2013, fiscal year 2013, was the lowest expenditures that we had, annual expenditures in that five-year window. You'll recall, we, we made some significant organizational changes, and we're just trying to be very prudent on any of our expenditures. And then lastly, we were helped out by having revenues exceed our projections for last year. As you recall, we had a nice, dry and fairly warm spring, a dry, hot summer. Those contribute significantly to water use, and so revenues were higher than we projected. Generally, as a rule, we try to be conservative and underestimate revenue and, and leave us, ourselves a little room on our expenditure side, and that's true for all city budgets. So why do we need a rate increase if our spending is down and our revenue was up last year? Well, we want to stay on track for hitting our target of being able to invest 1 and 1/4 million dollars annually into our system, and that's capital investment where we are replacing water lines that have extended their useful life, they're leaking, or we're addressing issues at our old treatment plant that are wearing out, or potentially addressing new regulations. So we want to be able to hit that target in 2017, so we're, we're trying to take a gradual approach. And we think that predictable small rate increases are better than large, unpredicted rates. You know, if, if we were to forego rates for a few years, and we want to still hit that target, that would mean we'd have to make that up at some point with a very large rate increase. So what is the impact of a 3% rate increase on our customers? I have just examples here for a resident, your average residential customer. Average residential customer uses somewhere between six and eight units of water a month. So if they're using six units of water a month, their water bill will increase $1.17 a month. If they're using eight units per month, their bill will go up about $1.31 a month. So that's, that's the impact that our residential customers see. So now, talking about where does the money go, trying to make the connection, tell our story of what customers pay and what do they get for their money. So first, let's talk about what customers pay. So customers pay $3.20 per day for not just water, but both sewer and water. And I'm showing both sewer and water here, even though we're only talking about the water rate increase, because most people read their bill as their water bill. It's one bill. So while all these accomplishments we'll talk about is simply in water, this 3.20 really is what they're paying for sewer and water. And this 3.20 a day is if they're using eight units per month. If they're using more, obviously, they're going to pay more per day and less, the same, they'll see less cost. So what do they get for their money? They get safe drinking water. We test our water very frequently. I'll go into some of those details here later. We're regulated by the state, so we have a lot of regulations and targets we have to meet. We also provide very reliable service. Oftentimes, I talk to groups, and I'll ask them, how many times, how many people have had their power go out in the last couple of years? Usually, several people raise their hands. I ask them the same question about water. You know, in the last three years, when was the last time you turned on the water and you didn't have it? I have yet to have a hand raised. I'm sure people are without water at times. In fact, we had an incident today where people would have been out of water for a short time as we repaired a, well, we have some, a lot of frozen pipes on the customer side, but we had an incident where someone in a stolen vehicle was trying to elude the police and found one of our hydrants, and we had to shut the water down shortly to, to take care of that issue.
Good thing I wasn't home today, because that was my neighborhood. It's impacted with no water. Yeah.
So I recently read some information from PP&amp;L. They were presenting the reliability of their service, and the local region of PP&amp;L was pretty proud of their reliability, because their annual outage was, every customer would see less than one outage per year. I think it was .92 outages per year, and they were happy about that, because that was better than the national average. The national average for people losing their power is over one time a year, and so I think Albany's record for providing water service is pretty good. The other thing customers receive is fire protection. Hopefully, that's not something they're thinking about often, but when the fire department rolls up and they need to connect to a hydrant to, to put that fire out, they're able to get the volume out. We have the storage to feed that hydrant for a long time in order for them to put out that fire, whether it's an industrial fire or residential fire. And then our system provides economic development opportunities. Because we have reliable service, because we have capacity in our system, as new industry or business wants to locate here, as residential development happens, we can serve them. So where does that money go? It goes into three main pots. It goes into repaying our debt. It goes into our daily operation and maintenance, and into our capital investment. So debt. As I said, we refinanced our debt recently, so we have an annual debt payment of just under $2 million, and that debt is anticipated to be paid off in 2034. How about on the operation and maintenance side? Well, this year, we replaced 89 water services. We repaired 55 waters, other water services. We installed 35 new services with meters, so that's a service all the way from our main line to the curb with a meter. We inspected and lubricated 1,300 hydrants. We repaired 63 hydrants. We replaced four hydrants. We know we have at least one that's going to need replacing as of today, and apparently there were two other hydrants that have been hit recently with the ice. I'm not sure if those are repairs or replacements yet. We installed 176 new meters, so that's dropping in a new meter for a new service. We replaced 700 old meters. We tested 94 large meters. Those are two large industrial customers, LBCC, those sort of folks, and obviously, those are important both from the city's revenue side, but also from the customer's side to make sure that those readings are accurate, and so we test those annually. We located and exercised, exercised almost 2,000 valves, which represents 25% of the valves we have in the system. It's important we know where those valves are, so when we have an emergency, we can get the line shut down and that those valves work. We repaired 157 valves. We made 27 water main repairs, and we repaired 127 water main blow-off locations. This here is a picture of a water service installation that the city is doing. The, you can see the little brass saddle on the existing pipe there, and I, I picked this picture because it shows some of the efficiencies we've been able to get to in the last several years, in that now that we have purchased our own small boring machine, so we can, instead of digging up across the entire roadway and opening up a huge hole, we can minimize what we have to dig down to expose the pipe, put on the saddle, and then we can bore the service under the roadway. So that saves time, it saves money, it also saves the streets. Here's just another picture of setup for an installation. This is a, what we call a short side service. This is a picture of a water line repair. On the left-hand side, you'll see that clamp on that water line, and those black lines running through there are power lines. Pacific Power used to own our water system, and it was often fairly common for them to bury their power lines along with their water lines, so that provides a special challenge for us here in Albany as we, as we deal with that.
Those are, those are primaries.
Yes.
And not, not 240 volt, that's 15,000 or whatever.
I don't know all the, the voltage there, but...
Not something you want to hit with a shovel.
No. Exactly.
Yeah.
It wouldn't spark. It'd blow the shovel in pieces and be gone.
What I'd like you to note on this, this is a picture of a repair. Now, the dark, black, and brown areas are actually the part of the pipe that hasn't been repaired. Everything else is a repair clamp. So this is an example of an old line that, obviously, for a while, we were trying to repair, but we ended up having to replace it. That's part of our capital replacement, where it's just no longer economically feasible to go back and repair lines. Here's a close-up shot of a leak on an old steel line. You can see the, the pinholes that are created, start leaking, and they grow. This picture is a picture of AC water main that broke, and those lines don't start with a pinhole. They fail catastrophically, as you can see here, and, and with failures such as that, obviously, you have the potential for significant damage to adjoining private property, significant damage to our roads and other utilities. You know, they're a longer fix, and so you have, have to shut the water down for a longer period of time, and they're costly. So what else have we done with O&M? We performed leak detection on 218 miles of pipe. We collected and analyzed 631 water quality samples, so that's throughout our whole system to make sure that we're meeting standards or exceeding standards for water quality. We flushed the system at 43 sites, again, keeping the water fresh in certain locations. You need to get some turnover. We assured that over 4,000 cross-connection devices were tested as required by the state to protect the quality of our water. We performed over 1,800 cross-connection inspections. That's where one of our staff goes out and verifies that a test has been done, or works with the property owner, getting them set up to do those inspections. We tested 61 of our own devices between parks and public works and all our other facilities that we have. We had 305 customer inquiries on water alone. We replaced 47 meter boxes, set and pulled 63 hydrant meters, and those are temporary meters at hydrants that contractors and landscapers use, so we put a meter out there, they can use it, and when they're done, we take the meter away and they pay for the water that they've used. We responded to almost 3,000 line locate requests. We did weekly inspections and services on our pump stations and reservoirs. We produced over 2.3 billion gallons of water. Here we have someone out doing flushing on a hydrant. There's leak detection, listening for leaks. Here we are taking sample from one of our sample sites. This is at our water treatment plant, making sure that the water we're producing is meeting our standards. What else? We produced almost 1 and 1/2 million kilowatts of electricity this year. We repaired the canal bank with our own crews in three locations. We performed brush cutting on 30 miles of canal bank. We have an 18-mile canal, and so you have 36 miles of bank, because of bank on each side. We removed over 200 dead or dangerous trees along the canal. We cleaned our three debris racks daily. Here's a picture of the canal. As you can see, that it does require significant annual maintenance to keep the brush clear for capacity and being able to inspect it and see what's happening on the canal. Here's our crews doing a repair down at the Vine Street Plant on the canal. And this is a control structure we have on the canal up in the Lebanon area. So how about on the capital side? What did we do? We designed and managed construction for two miles' worth of water line replacement. We did design and construction management for canal bank repairs that our own crews could not do because of their size or other restrictions. We did some significant work in planning for ultimate improvements that we have to do at Vine Street to meet water quality standards. This is just a picture of some plans. So our own staff, our engineers, produce the plans, the specifications. We coordinate, the engineers coordinate with our operations folks. They coordinate with the franchise utilities, the gas company, the power company, to make sure our projects aren't going to interfere. Then we put those out, the, the plans and the specs, we put those out to bid, and then we administer that contract. We make payments, we deal with the contractor, make sure that he's building it to our specifications. You know, oftentimes, we're coordinating with residents and other customers out there as far as changing over their water or impacts to access to their property. Here's some pictures of the large line that went in on Queen, I'm sorry, Hill this past summer. It was a very significant project, over a million dollars. So the question was asked at the Planning Commission, how are we doing on water loss? This is a table that shows the last five years, and the trend, as you can see, in 2007, we were at 20, almost 26% water loss, and in 2011, this report lags about a year with the state, we're just under 18%. So fairly significant progress. You'll see 2009, there's an odd, odd number there that looks like we dropped. I'm not exactly sure. That could be attributable to, we have certain allowances for fire and construction that we apply every year per the, the regulations, and it could have been we didn't use that much for that year. I'm not exactly sure, but, but the trend over the five years is fairly consistent there, from the 26% down to the 18%. So that, that you can see actual improvement from that capital investment, getting those leaky pipes out. You know, there's other ways too, in which we're replacing meters, so we're getting accurate reads. Anytime we see theft of service, we deal with that. So, so we are seeing marked improvements there. What else? We manage water rights. You know, we, you can't just dip into any creek, lake, or river and take out what you want. There are specific state rules about that, and so we're, we have to get those rights certified. They call them perfected, and there's quite a bit of coordination with that. We manage all our responses to state water quality regulations and changes. We maintain a model of our system so that we can know what our pressures and what our available capacity is, so if a new industry wants to come in, we can answer the question, well, how much water can I get, or what's the water pressure there? We review all development proposals that come in to make sure that they can be adequately served with water, what sort of improvements need to accompany those developments. And then we also respond to customers who come up to the counter or give us a call in, in the engineering department. And I think this is fairly remarkable. We have 17,000 water or utility accounts, and we manage those monthly. That means we're reading a meter, we're sending a bill, and we're processing a payment on those 17,000 accounts monthly. So obviously, they're a fairly busy group, and you have people who are starting service, stopping service, moving in, moving out. You have delinquent accounts you're dealing with, so it's, it's quite a bit of work on a monthly basis. So that's where the money goes, and I hope that provides a picture and connects what people pay for and what they get. Before I go into the five-year rate projection, any questions from council?
You showed us some plans that you, that you make for, for internal use. Are those, are you making those electronically, or is that a, still a paper and tri-square or...
No, those are done electronically on a drafting program, CAD, AutoCAD is what we use. Yep. Okay. So the five-year rate projection. So obviously, we have to do projections for both revenues and expenses. While we don't have a perfect crystal ball, obviously, we have experience, and so we try to apply that experience. We, we do some looking back and, and then apply our judgment. But our revenue sources we have are rates. That's our big driver for what our revenue is. That's what people pay on a monthly basis for their service. We also get some funding through system development charges. That's largely development-driven. As development happens, they pay into the system. Now, there is no general fund money. As development happens, they pay into the system. Now, there is no general fund money used in the water, running the water system. So our assumptions in the budget here, we're estimating that we're going to have an annual revenue of $11.3 million for the fiscal year 2014, inclusive of this rate increase. Obviously, if development takes off or the weather changes, that could change that, but that's our best conservative estimate. SDC revenues, we're using an estimate of $220,000 annually as we look out five years. Again, that will fluctuate as development fluctuates. Here's our, this is, this slide should have been titled "Rate History." So this is our five-year history of water rate revenues. You can see that we had a dip in revenues through fiscal year 2011, and because of the recent rate increases, that's starting to creep back up, again, trying to hit that target of generating $1.25 million for that capital investment into the system. Here's our averages for SDC revenues. The five-year average is just over $250,000, but our three-year average is $225,000. So as I said, in our projection, we're using $220,000. That's fairly conservative. And if the trend continues up with SDC revenue, we'll modify that revenue projection in the five years at our next look. So, you know, if development increases, the picture looks a little better for rates. So expenditures, as we talked about, you have debt, operation and maintenance, and the capital. This graph here is instructive in a couple ways. One, first of all, the very top line, which is a green line, and Councilor Olson, can you see the green? I'm hoping, okay. The first thing to notice, this is our debt service payments. The good trend here is, you see, they've dropped, and that's due to that refinancing. So we were up over $2.5 million. We had some debt that came off the books, and then our refinancing. So we're under $2 million. So that's, that's the good news of this picture. The less rosy news is the second line down, the black line. That's how much rates is paying of that debt service. SDCs pays a portion, and rates pays a portion. And you'll see in fiscal year 2017, rates is showing paying all of the debt service. And that's because with current SDC revenues, that $220,000 that we've plugged in there, we're projecting we won't have enough SDC funds for them to pay their rate share, or their debt, their share of the debt. And so rates will have to pick that up unless some other funding source is identified. Again, if development picks up, that line could get pushed out. Ultimately, you know, if development goes gangbusters, maybe SDCs will carry their share of the rates, I'm sorry, of the debt. So again, the target, $1.25 million per year, and we're breaking that out in general terms of about $1 million annually for pipe replacement, and $250,000 annually for our reservoirs, pump stations, our treatment plants, and canal. And as I've stated before, that number can fluctuate. We may spend more on a large treatment project one year, but this is kind of the general target that we, that we have. This target is significantly less than what was recommended back when we adopted the 2000 financial plan for water. However, we're recognizing the economic situation we're in, and so we've dialed it back and said that $1.25 million is what is the recommended least amount of capital investment to keep the system running. Variables that we don't completely control, rate revenues, as I said, weather plays a huge part in that. Development does too. SDC revenues, pretty much development-driven. Personnel and operating expenses, we've done a pretty good job of controlling those, and we'll continue to try to do that annually. And then there's always the chance that you have an unforeseen capital need, a pump station that you don't anticipate needing major work. Something could happen, maybe a new regulation. But we try and keep, keep on top of those and minimize those as much as possible and be proactive in our management.
People driving over hydrants.
That's right. So here is the rate, the five-year rate projection as of this year. On the far-left side, 2013, you'll see we implemented a 2% rate increase last year. We had originally thought it was going to be a four, so we came in under. But 2014, we had projected a 5% rate increase. We're recommending three. And then you'll see for the next three years, we had thought about a 5% rate increase was going to be required, and we've reduced that down to 4%. And then we've added the new projections for 2019. 2018, last year, we really, we just put something in so it wouldn't be zero, and we really should have put a placeholder for inflation. So that's a little bit misleading. But the news is, I guess it's trending. It's trending well, as far as we're not anticipating higher rate increases. However, there are things outside our control that could change that. So council had asked for a look at comparative cities. I know that's small, so I have the same thing as a handout. So Mary's going to pass that around. And this is a comparator of 24 cities, ranging from almost 600,000 in population in Portland, down to a population of 845 at Adair. At times, people have said Albany has the highest rates in the nation, or the highest rates in Oregon. And this comparison, again, it's only 24 communities, it's not all communities, shows that while we are in the upper third, we are not near the highest. So Albany, the first number, column after the list of the city, is what do people pay in a base rate? And cities' rate structures are different. Some of them charge higher base rates and collect more based on actual usage. You can see Albany's 12th out of the 24, so we're right in the middle as far as how high our base rate is. I should point out, this is not just water. This is all utility costs. So for us, it's sewer and water. There are some communities that also have stormwater fee, a street fee. Corvallis has some sustainability fees. This is all utility rate fees. Albany, once you take your average customer who uses six units of water, we would have the seventh-highest utility cost. You see some local communities, Lebanon and Independence and Adair are higher than us. If the customer's using eight units of water, Sweet Home jumps ahead of us also in cost. So that tells you where we are. As I said, generally, we're in the upper third, but we are not the highest as we look at these 24 cities. So with that, entertain any questions regarding this presentation or rates in general.
Thank you for doing this chart. So it's real helpful, Mark.
Questions, Dick?
Yeah, you have a table on page 12 that has a lot of, a lot of your different charges on it. And I got a question from one of my constituents. I think she wrote you a check, and there were insufficient funds, and she got a notification. She came right down, paid cash, or made it, made it good. But she was charged $25, and she thought that was kind of unfortunate and kind of, kind of high for having insufficient funds in her checking account. A couple months ago, I wrote a check to, I want to think of bigger deals that you have to pay by the month. I forgot to sign the check. And they just sent the check back and said, please write us a check for this month and last month. Didn't charge her anything for it. I'm wondering. Why, why does, and is this, are you raising from $25 to $35 per item, financial institution return item? Is that, it's the 1, 2, 3? Write them down on this Exhibit A of this chart here on page 12 of our agenda.
Yeah, I believe that is for if we go and cash someone's check, and it's returned as insufficient funds or whatever else.
Costs that much to do that process?
Well, it's, there is a cost for us to process and reprocess. There's also, there is a certain segment of the population that does these sort of things intentionally, because if they give us a check in order to just not get their water shut off, they're buying a few extra days. And so there is a deterrent portion to that, as well as what is the cost for the city to go through the process to deal with that.
I wonder, a tampering fee of $100, what constitutes tampering?
Tampering would be if we had locked someone's service off, and they went ahead and cut the lock or turned their service back on when they hadn't made a payment.
Not just to get somebody turning the water off so they can change a valve or something like that?
No, no, it's someone who has, who has been denied service, who then instigates their own service again without our approving.
Okay. And then I was going to suggest that maybe we ought to lower rates somehow in the summertime, encourage people to water lawns rather than having so many dry lawns. We've been through that before. Doesn't seem to be a popular thing with the state or the council.
Well, we do have, in our, the way our rate structure is built, it's called a declining block. So the more water you use, the less you pay per unit of water you use. And to my knowledge, we're probably the only city left in the state with that in our rate structure. It's frowned upon because generally, the idea is to promote conservation. So.
We can conserve all the water we've got, do we? I mean, are we going to run out of the canal water? It's a state requirement.
We, we don't have an issue with meeting demand. Whether we should be using all that water on lawns or washing cars, you know, that's, that's a different issue.
Yeah, I'm an arch-conservative, so you know, I kind of disagree with this conservation stuff.
One of the things that we've dealt with in the past is, there is a component of state requirement to maintain our water rights, that we have a conservation component to the rates.
Is that right?
And failure to have a conservation component will raise the ire of water resources, which would put our water rights in jeopardy.
I better change my ways than that.
We've been telling you that for years, Dick.
So wash your bicycle on your lawn.
Mark, I have a question on the private fire protection. I called Mark and told him I was going to raise this issue, and he pointed, brought it to our attention at the last council meeting, proposing to not have a fee for fire protection services.
Correct.
And as I remember, there were about 59 or 60 current ones that we identify, and this is a holdover from our old PP&amp;L system. But it's for fire protection from the city main to a structure for the purposes of sprinkler systems or standpipes. And in our previous discussion, we were told that we know that we have 60, about 60 customers, but we think that there are more out there.
Yep, that's correct.
And I believe we ought to be maintaining that fee for that service, because it is a service to provide fire flow to those standpipes and those sprinklers, and that staff ought to move to identify the ones that we don't know about, or the ones that we have inaccurate information on. It's part of the utility system. To simply not bill for the service for a portion of the utility system, or not know where connections to the utility system are, I think is inappropriate. So my recommendation, and if I make a motion, will be to, to drop the recommendation of staff, continue the existing fee schedule with the 3% increase, and then have staff work on identifying those missing components or inaccurate information over this next year, so they give us a complete inventory as they come back. The revenue issue of that is about, if I remember correctly, $27,000 a year. We're struggling to gain $350,000. $27,000 is not an insignificant piece. And if we picked up another 50 fire services, that would probably double. And from my, my way of thinking is, if the user isn't paying for the service, I mean, somebody else is subsidizing it. So I would make a recommendation that we reinsert our existing rates and add whatever the percentage is the council agrees upon for this next year.
And you can certainly do that. The staff perspective there is that we know that we have customers out there who are getting the benefit right now, who are not paying. And then we have some customers who are paying. It's fairly inconsistent. And then we have customers out there who might have the service that we don't know about. We have been actively pursuing this issue, and we really, we pursue it from three angles. The fire department has some data on who has fire services out there. And then we have some from a cross-connection standpoint, and then we have our utility list. And so we're looking at all those lists and trying to say, okay, let's make sure we have a correct list. And so we've, we've visited, I believe it's about 70% of those customers that we have in our utility billing system. And we found that about 20% of those people were, even though they're being billed, they're being billed incorrectly. And then we have this fire department list, we have the cross-connection list. And our reasoning behind this was just trying to treat people equity as we work it out. And you're right, as, once we have the full picture, bring that back to council. Obviously, we'll do as, as you wish. I can give you at least a general feel for what those fire services costs are. For a two-inch service, prior to a 3% rate increase is $12.46 a month. Up to a 10-inch service, which is just $69.68 a month. So those would be increased by 3% if you want those back in.
Those are metered?
They are, they are not, they're what's called, I should say, most of them have what's called a snooper meter, which will tell you is there usage or not, not how much usage. Just to say, you can check them and say, oh, has someone tapped into it accidentally or illicitly? I will say, some of those don't have, you know, some of what we found, these old systems, don't have meters on them. Some of them don't have backflow protection. So there's a lot of things to work out with it.
Well, it occurs to me that, I mean, if people are using the system, and if they are getting the benefits, they'll be paying for it. And our, our focus should be on making sure that, yes, that it is equitable, but I think we find that it is equitable by charging everybody who is getting, actually getting the service, rather than not charging everybody because some people are not being charged.
Mark, can you explain what exactly the non-service is? I mean, can you give me an example of who it would be, or what kind of a, I mean, is it like a house that's on a well that's still getting service, or what?
Generally, it's a commercial property or an industrial property where they have a domestic service that serves, you know, their bathrooms, their kitchen, and yet they, they also need to serve fire sprinkler system. And so they have a separate service, separate line that serves just the sprinkler system or their fire suppression system. It's, it's generally a bigger line. The reason we actually have this fee, it's a holdover from when PP&amp;L owned the system. So they charged people for this, this right. They actually charged the city for each hydrant that we had, because they owned the system. And if we wanted to use those hydrants, they charged us. When the rates were looked at back in 2000 by the task force, this was the like, the last item on their list. And as you recall, that task force went on for about two years, and they finally said, we're not going to deal with this right now. And it kind of got put to bed. We've resurrected the issue. And, but, you know, it's. And it kind of got put to bed. We've resurrected the issue and, but, you know, it's, it's a policy decision for the council to make.
Yeah.
I'd point out that for those businesses or industries that have this service, they receive a benefit in their insurance ratings. So, you know, the fact that we're charging them to provide that fire flow there, they've received the benefit not only from having the water available, but they've had a reduction in their insurance rates.
And I guess you're kind of angling towards the issue of the cost of service. They get a service they should pay. And again, we can, we can leave these as they are. I think it's worth, obviously, we're going to bring back this discussion once we have better information for you. We don't have a true cost of service rate structure though. You know, not everyone's paying exactly based on the benefit they receive. And that was a decision that was made by the task force and the council balancing many different priorities and issues. But if the, well, the council's to leave those in as we work through this, certainly we can do that.
Can they, okay, so you have two different lines going into the same building. Can they be, no. Can, they can't be put together? I mean...
Well, if they put them together, they have a, a larger service and a larger meter. And generally, their monthly cost would be higher rather than paying for a small one-inch domestic service and then paying this monthly fee for a fire service. Because those monthly fees for a fire service are less than, for say, a six-inch line are less than what they would pay if they were paying for a six-inch service that's their main service and they're taking both the domestic and the fire.
I agree with Floyd. I think if they're getting it, they're, it's there for them. And so, I can't see not having them pay where everyone else is paying or what they have.
I quickly went and did a, a little search just on my cellphone. And other utilities have a fire service standby charge. And it ranges from, in structure and size, but they generally have it. It's a benefit provided by the utility to the property owner for the purposes of fire suppression.
So, we would, if, if I'm reading council correctly, those, based on, as we gain the information, people who have that service who are not being charged right now, we will institute that for those ones we, we know now. And as we discover them, we will institute that. And then we will bring this back for a larger discussion on, on how to deal with these. Is that correct? Because there is a question of those people who we know now or will discover soon are getting this service but aren't paying it.
Sort of how much that's going to be, so...
How much it would cost for each customer?
How much the charge might be. So, when I get the complaint, I can say, well...
It, it depends on how large their, their fire service is. Most fire services are probably going to be a four or a six-inch fire service. So, for a four-inch fire service, they'd be paying probably around, under twenty dollars. For a six-inch, they'd be paying about thirty dollars a month, per month. If they had a large, if they had a ten-inch, they'd be paying, boy, probably seventy-three dollars a month. But that's a very large diameter.
An inch line for fire suppressions.
Large industrial.
Well, maybe not watch hang because you don't put water on a watch hang fire.
Target, target distribution.
There are people who have. It's not ready.
Well, I would, I would withhold that recommendation until we complete the public hearing to see what we want to do.
Okay, all right. Any other questions to staff? All right, with that, we will offer for comments if anybody has any comments in favor or opposition or neutral on our water rate increase. Okay, all right, not seeing anyone. With that, I will close the public hearing at eight-thirty PM. Counsel, there's a resolution on page ten.
I would move adoption of the resolution on page ten with the exception of modifying Exhibit A, Section 3A to include the existing fire service fee schedule increased by the three percent level.
Second.
Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried.
I'll ask a question. Could you forward, Mark, can you forward this table to me so people who think we have the highest of all possible water rates, I can send it to them?
Yeah, if you'd like, I could send that out to all council, that table. Would that be helpful? Okay, I will email that out then?
Yeah, there's a, also a link that we might be able to provide to a League of Oregon City Study that was done a few years ago, which basically showed the same thing. We have not had the highest rates in the state.
I know that.
We haven't even had the highest rates in the county.
Utilities that would include the rates.
All right, next is business from the public. And Scott, I think you were going to come forward this evening.
My name is Scott. Let me, my office is one hundred Ferry Street, Albany, Oregon. I'm here to thank the council on the benefit of Cockamus County Bank and myself as the manager of the Buox Re Park. Yesterday, we met with staff regarding changes to make it feasible for the park. And I wanted to thank the staff and all the counselors to listen and visit with me and the others involved.
Looks like you're getting some good resolution to that.
Yes, I, I believe so. And I believe that there'll be a discussion with, about that either now or later this evening.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay, great. Thank you, Scott. Okay, anyone else from business from the public? Okay, not seeing anyone. Okay, council next is, this one was kind of a continuance from last meeting and that's removing forty-five feet of on-street parking on Thurston Street. Did staff have any comments? Yes, Ron?
Yeah, Ron's here to fill in information about his discussions with the, the school district and answer all your questions, right?
Yes, sir. At your last meeting on the fourth, you requested that a representative from GAPS come to you and, and provide some answers about why they made the request and the benefit it would have. I, I sent the GAPS representative an email on Thursday saying that I'd like to talk to him about coming. Didn't hear back. I phoned them this morning. They're based at the bus garage. Got no answer. My suspicion is that the bus garage is empty because of the weather and probably has been since Friday. So, there is not a GAPS representative here to answer your questions. I, I did however, prior to that first council meeting and the first agenda item, correspond via a couple of emails with the GAPS representative, also met them at the site. So, I could probably answer some questions about the history of the request and the problems they're facing. But you don't have the GAPS representative here.
All right.
I, I don't know if anyone else had done a site visit out there. I did go out and look it over. And the situation is that there's, on Thurston Street by the school is you have a row of houses and duplexes, you know, on that dead-end street. And then on the other side of the street is the city, or is the school district property. The day I was there, I think it was last week, there wasn't a single car parked on the street. So, it didn't appear that there was any, you know, ongoing serious parking issue. And even with the loss of the total of forty-five feet, was it?
Yes.
There is a very long stretch. I mean, the folks that live there are realizing a nice benefit of having that school district property available for parking and, and really taking away very, very little in an attempt to accommodate what the district has, you know, discovered is sometimes a problem. And I, and I think the district would probably tell you that this isn't...
Not very much.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a huge thing, but they're having some difficulty doing the turning movements that are necessary to safely drop off and pick up kids. And, and so, the bottom line is that it seems like a fairly straightforward request from the, from the district.
Day when school was in session?
Yes, school was in session.
Let me disagree. I've been there twice. Once when school was in and once today when it wasn't. The turnaround they've got is, I've been a truck driver. It's in the worst possible place you can put it. I mean, if, you know, realistically. They put it in the middle of the block instead of at the end down by the park where, you know, that would have been reasonable for them to come to us and say, you know, let's put something at the end and, and go into it together. But even that having been said, there have been places occasionally when there are not enough parking spots and we'd be taking some away. They don't have to do what they're doing. They're choosing to do it. You could come in on Jackson Street and go over on Nineteenth and turn the corner and back into the place where the, where the buses go. I mean, and that is a whole bunch safer than what they're doing now. I mean, when you're backing a truck or a bus or whatever, the problem is when you're backing and turning at the same time. Because your peripheral vision in a mirror, I mean, it's, things are coming in from the side and if you're turning quickly, sometimes you, you don't see it until you've already hit it. If they come in either across Nineteenth or Twentieth and turn on Thurston and head south and then back into the position, they're backing virtually straight back. I have a second issue with, with the whole system that it seems when the school district comes to us, it's a, here, gimme, gimme, we need. And that may be what reasonable is. I don't know. I haven't been around long enough. But, I mean, they needed help with money when they put in a school over on Knox Butte. I mean, they came to us with a, in a joint meeting and said, gee, your streets are too narrow. Well, the streets are not too narrow for my truck. This is same side. They're not too narrow for Beacons and Allied and Mayflower and UPS and, you know. I guess they, they're expecting us to, to fix a problem that they created. I mean, it used to, this is not a new school. This has been here and they've been doing it for a long time. They changed something, whatever that something is. And that's what I wanted to know. What was it that they changed? What was it that, that we, you know, we should take into account that, you know, it made it so it was more difficult? That they needed it to be changed? I'm not hearing that.
I, I will take a stab at it. The, the turnaround itself was constructed in about two thousand five, two thousand six. It preceded the school bond measure that's more recent. So, the school bond measure that, for instance, built the school out on Timber Ridge, this happened before that by several years. Before the turnaround was built, the school bus pickup and the parent pickup for students all happened on Thurston Street. And it was a zoo. And so, in consultations with the city, both staff and council, the decision was made to try and separate out the locations where the bus pickup happened versus a parent pickup of students. So, separating those two, generally at every school we look at, that's one of the things we try and do when a school has problems with loading and unloading at the end of class. The problem with Thurston Street, that's not a good place for the parent pickup because it's off to the side. It's hard for the school to control. Easier for the school to control that if that's the, this Thurston is the bus pickup location. Problem with Thurston for the bus pickup is that it's a long dead-end street with no turnaround, no hammerhead, no cul-de-sac at the end. And so, the decision was made to try and figure out a way to get the buses to physically turn around. They picked a spot on school district property, which is not at the end of the road, as you mentioned. At the end of the road, the last three or four hundred feet of that road is city park property. So, while it was probably a possibility of using some of the city park property to build a turnaround, to my recollection, that idea never came up at the time. That everybody kind of focused on it happening on the school property and not down at the end of the road. The, the turnaround has worked fairly well since two thousand five, two thousand six. Only recently has the school district encountered problems with it. The problem is related in some measure to the way the school buses access the turnaround. The way they're using it today is a turnoff of, well, they're on Thurston, heading south. They pass the school. They go slightly past the turnaround, still facing south, stop back into it, and then pull around to the north. The actual bus loading location is up very near Nineteenth, right next to the school. When they make that maneuver today, there are no parking restrictions anywhere on the street. So, the only parking restriction that really applies near to this is you can't block a driveway. And there is a tenant on one of the duplexes with a very large pickup truck that parks on the duplex side or the, the east, the west side of the road, that when that, that truck is parked there, it makes it difficult for the school bus to back into the turnaround. And so, the school district's original request when they came to me was, could they get yellow curb on the west side of the street in front of the duplexes? And my advice to them was that that would be very difficult. That the council has historically been reluctant to remove parking in front of residential property. Is there any other way they could maneuver here? Could they, instead of backing into that turnaround, could they instead pull into it and back out? Ultimately, they took that suggestion. They were, are willing now to pull into the turnaround as they head to the south, back up. And it's a different maneuver than they would prefer, but they're willing to do that. To their knowledge, they haven't historically seen cars parking on the east side of the road where they're asking for yellow curb. But if they change their, their preferred pattern for the bus maneuvering, they've asked that we install that yellow curb to basically ensure that they'd be able to continue to make that movement. They're not sure why the resident of the duplex was reluctant to not park it well. They contacted the rec, the resident of that duplex, asked if he'd be willing to not park his car there. And the response was, no, it's a public road. He can park wherever he wants. Their fear, and he's entirely correct. It's a public road. He can park wherever he wants. Their fear is that, that he will park on their side of the road for the sole purpose of getting in the way of the bus traffic. And so, they are asking for this yellow curb to preclude that. It, it is on the fringe of their property. It would remove the overall amount of parking available on the street. If you look between the bus turnaround and where the yellow curb would go and the bus loading area to the north, there's room for about ten spaces between where this, this yellow curb would be and the bus loading zone. If you look to the south towards the school property, there's room for about twelve additional spaces. So, if we look at the, the amount of parking on the street compared to any other residential street in town where you have houses on both sides, driveways on both sides, this particular street has an abundance of parking compared to other streets. But the request would remove basically two spaces. But that was the basis for the school district's request.
I'll admit, I have not gone out and visited the site, but looking like an awful lot of blank space on the map showing that it's school property, do they not have the wherewithal to physically enlarge the bus turnaround to eliminate this issue?
They could make it wider. You know, they could make a much wider turnaround spot. That would remove as much or more on-street parking as with the yellow curb. And it would just cost more because you have to build a bigger pad. They could provide not a hammerhead turnaround, but go onto their site and provide basically a cul-de-sac bulb on their site. It would be similar in size to what would be needed for a fire truck, for instance. Those have a turning radius of about, you know, just under fifty feet. So, you'd have a hundred-foot diameter pad. If you look what's out there right now, there's some, some lawn to the north. There's a playground a little bit, probably wouldn't be impacted with play structures. There's a ball field pretty close to the south and the east that would be impacted by a turnaround of that size. So, they, they have room to do it, but it would affect what they did with their fields.
Kind of an option is, you know, maybe if we did approve this today for this yellow striping is to also look at the Community Development Commission that we have allocated funds for improving Sunrise Park, which would be also adding parking. And maybe there could be a way for buses to turn around, however those improvements are. I don't know for sure what all Ed Hodney has, you know, vision for the improvements that are, you know, bringing in funds for that, into that, into the street. Maybe something like that could be a bus turnaround down there.
It's, if we built the parking lot down at the south end for the park, it's entirely possible we could design... possible we could design it to allow a flow-through for a bus. Most parking lots aren't quite set up that way. So I haven't seen the design that Ed's looking at for parking there, it's possible that it would work just the way he shows it, or it might need to be tweaked.
Yeah. I mean, it'll be a few years before, you know, the funds are fully raised, you know, to be, to do those improvements, so maybe this could be just an interim, you know, solution for the school and then revert it back once, if there was some improvements for Sunrise. But that depends on what is all planned for that area. Okay, Rich?
I guess the bottom line, you know, while, you know, let's not reinvent the wheel, but there's at least two ways that they could back into those places straight, that they wouldn't have to do anything. They could just change where the buses went. I mean, if a semi can do it, if a big truck can do it, if my truck can do it, there's good. I mean, it's just a matter of going around the corner on 19th and backing in, it's, you know, it's straight.
Having been at Sunrise when class gets out, I would be reluctant to come up with a plan that forced a hammerhead maneuver at that intersection where the students are. If we're going to have buses backing up, my personal preference, it's farther away from where the students are. But physically, they could do it.
No question they could do it. If I can do it, they can do it.
I'm not sure it's a good idea that they do it there when the students are there, but they could physically do it.
I would think that they would be there before the students got out. That's when buses normally get there.
You know, I understand the issue that council's wrestling with, that we're being asked to find a solution to a problem that we didn't create. And there are solutions that could work on school property that would cost a lot more money, but trying to be practical, I don't think backing up from 19th or backing up from 20th on Thurston, you know, the distance of two and a half lots at school dismissal time is a good idea. If we can incorporate something later on in conjunction with the park, I think that'd be great, but the loss of two parking spaces and five feet to accommodate that turnaround to keep the kids safe, I would be in favor of the approval, but I think the message we send to the school district is, please think about these things ahead of time and don't come to us, you know, after you've created the problem.
Should we wait till our representative can brave the weather and get here?
I don't need that. I mean, I want the message sent to the school district, fix the problems the first time. I mean, I realize that they're not generally transportation people. I mean, you know, they deal what they deal with. But, I mean, there is, from my perspective, an ongoing, problems created and they want someone else to fix it, and, you know, it ought to be a two-way street.
I think with that discussion, I would move approval of the request.
Second. Go ahead.
Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay, I think, do you want to roll call or look like four, two?
Bessie Johnson and Rich Killen voting no.
Yep.
The other four were yes, so that passes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Ron. Okay, council next, as you have a, waiting the competitive bidding. This is a resolution that's on page 39, and this is for, well, Mark?
Sure. What staff is seeking? What we're seeking is what is called a class special procurement exemption from council acting as the contract review board. And you actually did something like this back in 2012 for some other equipment we use on our plants. Obviously, we have a lot of equipment that, excuse me, we have equipment where we have a lot of different pieces to, multiple meters, multiple valves or actuators, and it's important that we're able to maintain those efficiently. It's important that these instruments talk to each other as they need to, and we have a specific need at the Vine Street plant for turbidity meters, streaming current meter, these flow meters and some valve actuators. And as we, we could come to you and ask for an exemption to purchase those specifically. Generally, we are not allowed to say, this is the type of material we want. We would say, we want a valve actuator, and different people could bid on that. The problem with that is we would end up in our facilities with multiple types of valve actuators, multiple types of meters, that then when you try to maintain those, calibrate those, it creates a big problem. So we could come to you on a case-by-case basis. What we're trying to do is be somewhat efficient when we know that while we have a need for a couple meters now, we know at the AM Treatment Plant, we're going to need to replace meters, we may need them for the canal, different things like that. We're asking a class exemption, so we don't have to come back every time. Chris Bailey, Mike Bryan, and Jeff Kinney are here, they can answer any detailed questions you have about these, this equipment. But that's essentially what we're asking for in this request.
Okay, any questions?
I would support it, you know, having dealt with treatment plants most of my life, there is a need for consistency with instrumentation and control devices. It's a matter of efficiency, you don't have to stock extra parts, you've got people that you can rely upon and call when things go haywire, you don't have vendors scattered all over everywhere. So I think this is a mechanism of being efficient and minding how we're doing our business.
Thanks, Rich.
Is Paramount stocking parts for these?
They have some parts.
Okay.
But we were, we all, mid rep.
Well, I mean, about being a supplier, I mean, if you're stocking parts for something that a customer has, you know, and you've been asked to, there is kind of a, whether it's written or not, there is an obligation, because they're giving you service above and beyond.
Okay, all right. So Bill and Bessie?
This supplier, is it H Hatch?
Hatch.
Oh, Hawk.
Yeah, wrong. Where are they located?
They're a manufacturer.
Pardon me?
Our reps for Hawk is in Portland.
Okay, so nobody locally is selling those, selling that equipment, okay.
Kind of on the same line, I just wondered, they are the only suppliers in the area? I mean, I understand the consistency in having a good rep and everything like that, but I just wondered, are they the only ones that supply these things?
Generally, what happens with this type of equipment is manufacturers have designated distributors for their materials. So you can't just go to, you know, you'll have, Hawk would say, okay, here is who's my distributor, and so you can't just go to any, anyone who sells meters and get a Hawk meter, you would get, you know, if you went to someone else, they're a distributor for another manufacturer. So it's fairly regionalized for these sort of things, and they're servicing obviously multiple communities and industries.
Okay, so apparently we have Hawk now, and that's why. I was just thinking, like, if there's Hawk or there's a Smith, you know, if there's competition or anything like that, but if it's the same thing, then I have no problem, but I just wondered. Thank you.
Okay, all right, council, there's a resolution on page 39. What would you like to do with this item?
Approve.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next is adoption of the consent calendar. If there isn't any items that need to be pulled off for discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Move for adoption of consent calendar.
Okay, second. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, all right, it's taken care of. Agenda items next is business from the council. Before that, there is one item that we need to take care of here, and brought to my attention that Cascade West Area Commission on Transportation, the expiring term is the end of this month, so we need to do the reappointment, because COG needs to have that done before, so we can't wait till our January meeting. And the councillor Olson is the primary and Ron Irish is the alternate.
Reappointment.
Okay. All right. Second. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right, and we'll get that off to council governments on that one. Okay, and next would be, Bessie, did you have anything this evening?
Well, Your Honor, I do, it's just kind of a follow-up on the medical marijuana dispensaries, and, I mean, we got the letter from the different public safety agencies and whatever, and so I just wondering, and this is to you, Jim, to see if you could maybe update us as to if you find out anything that we can do, can't do, and I know it's like, oh yeah, let somebody else take care, you know, but I just wonder where we are on that.
Well, there isn't any greater clarity on the question of whether or not local governments have jurisdiction to preclude dispensaries or substantially alter the rules from the state program. The state is in the process of finishing up their dispensary rules, but I don't think it's going to answer that question. I sent Wes, and I think he forwarded all of you, a timetable, because basically, what you need to, what I think you want to decide is whether or not you want to take a position of prohibiting dispensaries in Albany. If you want to do that, there are essentially two paths that are being pursued by some other communities. One is for those communities who have business licenses, to deny business licenses for operations which violate federal law. We don't have business licenses, and so that mechanism is not readily available to you unless you were to adopt a comprehensive business license program, which is a big bite right now to undertake that. The second way that communities in other states and potentially in Oregon have dealt with dispensaries is through land use regulations. And I think that if you do want to take the position of banning dispensaries, that doing so through modifications to our existing development code would be the best and cleanest way to do that. Specifically, I'll call your attention to some provisions of the development code, because I have been considering that you might decide to do this. We currently have in the administration section of the development code, under the heading of scope and compliance, a requirement that a parcel of land or a structure may be used or developed only, only as this code permits. Then you have a section two noun that talks about consistency with plans and laws. It says, actions initiated under this code should be consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan of the City of Albany and with all applicable state and federal laws. So an argument could be made that under the existing code, a dispensary which if it is in violation of federal law is not permitted in Albany. I think there's an ambiguity, or I think it's potentially vague, however, but I would suggest this would be the place that you would add language. And while I would not presume that this is the final language I would recommend, I'm thinking a sentence such as, no parcel of land or structure may be used for the dispensation or delivery of any drug if such dispensation or delivery is or would be a violation of state or federal law. Now, the other advantage to doing it within the development code is you have enforcement sections also already in place in the administration section. And basically, what would be allowed would be in addition to using the general penalty, which I would not recommend in this case, and I can explain if you wish, but you have the ability to seek, to enjoin violations if somebody, basically what it would mean is that they couldn't get a development approval for a dispensary, and if they operated a dispensary without a development approval, we could go to court to ask the circuit judge to enjoin that action. So if you want to outlaw dispensaries or any other sale that is in violation of federal law, I would recommend you do it through development code modification. David Martino was kind enough with Mark Shepherd's direction to provide me with a timeline which I passed on to Wes and threw him to you. And if we want to have this change in effect before the dispensaries are licensed to proceed, we need to do so next week. Coincidentally, Wes and Chief Latanzio and I will be attending a conference, I believe it's in Oregon City, a week from today, to talk with other communities about what steps they're taking, and it would be a good opportunity to see what other cities think about this approach. So I guess, in light of what you're suggesting, councillor Johnson, if you want to outlaw dispensaries, then I would suggest that you direct staff to initiate a land use, a development code amendment to accomplish that end.
And I would add that if you're going to take this on, that one of the advantages of using the land use process is that it's heavy on process, and that's why it takes so long, because it's got to go through hearings at both the planning commission and the city council level, giving people the opportunity to testify, because I suspect there will be quite a bit of interest in this subject, and I don't think the council wants to be accused of having rushed it through. If you take this step, it's very deliberative, people have a chance to comment and, you know, tar and feather the appropriate people in advance of any action.
And what about also, I think we've had discussion about having, applying the same rule that we have for adult entertainment, the commercial zoning could not be located any closer than 300 feet of residential.
Well, if it's illegal, it's illegal.
Right, but it would be just in case there's a, if federal law does ever change, so then that would become like a backup, just to make sure they're properly zoned in an area, and just as we do for adult entertainment.
Well, I would recommend against that. I think that if, I think you will weaken your chance of succeeding in the banning if you're also then making it, fitting it in, if you will. There are already provisions in the dispensary law which say that it must be located in an area that is zoned for commercial, industrial, or mixed use. May not be located within 1,000 feet of real property comprising a public or private elementary, secondary, or career school attended primarily by minors. May not be located within 1,000 feet of another medical marijuana facility, that's to prevent them from clustering, so.
But that's still, there's a lot of neighborhood-type commercial that we have throughout the community, so that still would be, they could cite it right adjoining residential.
But would we be then saying, it's unlawful to locate a dispensary in Albany, but if you do, it can't be within?
Right. I mean, it's just, it's sort of kind of a backup just in case federal law changes where you can't ban whatsoever.
Well, if federal law changes so that these are legal, we're going to be in a difficult regulatory fix anyway.
I think it would go exactly opposite of what you're trying to do, Mayor. If you say no, you can't do it, I mean, if that's what this body would decide to do, no is no.
Well, on our basis for saying no is because it's in violation of federal law. But I suggest that if federal law changes, and we believe though that it's still subject to zoning, and it would be, for example, if federal law changed so that marijuana was legal, we could still regulate types of businesses, and at that point, I think it would be appropriate to look at.
At a later time.
Right, at whatever zoning restrictions you might want to have on where businesses, where commercial activities like this are located, would be the better time to do it. So if you're inclined to do this, again, my recommendation would be that you direct staff to put into the land use process an amendment which would have the effect of prohibiting drug transfers which are in violation of state or federal law, and basically leave it to me with the assistance of the chief and planning staff to figure out wording which we think will do that with the least amount of collateral drama.
So, thoughts? What would the council like to do?
Well, I'm adamantly opposed to it. I've sent a letter to, a comment to everybody already individually, you know where I stand on this, and if the on this, and if the state goes, comes down on March 1st and says they're going to be legal, I'm going to be right out in the forefront trying to help getting, getting them established in Albany.
What would council like to do on this item?
I personally, I don't know what my decision would ultimately be, but I think because of the timing and Wes's comment about the, about the procedural issues, I think we ought to have staff go ahead and develop it and let it run its course and see what comes to us and make our deliberative decision when we have all the information.
I agree.
I'm not prepared to say yes or no tonight, because I simply don't know enough.
And I think consistent with the requirements of land use process, you should be an unbiased decision maker when you actually, after you hear the planning commission recommendation and after you hear from those citizens who testify. And it also provides continuing opportunities for the process to be refined, the proposal can evolve, but if we want to be in a position where the council would have the authority to adopt an ordinance prior to the effective, prior to the March 1st effective date, we would need to begin next week.
I think it's just doing our smart staff work, our due diligence, and, you know, a lot of times I have not supported staff decisions and overturned recommendations, so I'd like to hear the both sides of the coin.
I think we ought to proceed cautiously, you know, we're talking about maybe building a new fire station sometime, maybe building a new police station sometime. I think if we come out with a saying that we're really in favor of prohibition, I think we're going to antagonize a fairly sizable portion of our populace.
I don't agree with that at all, I think.
I know you won't, but you're wrong.
But, no, no, just because you think it doesn't mean you're right. Just because I think the way I am doesn't mean I'm right, but I think we just need to, I like the idea, like Jim says, of going through the process, because that way we do hear from both sides, we have, we have the public input, it's not like we're saying, yep, this is the way it's going to be, we'll have the public, you know, like, you know, we'll do the, do diligence and see, you know, see where, where it falls. I just think that we have, we have a lot of support from the public safety people and saying that, you know, in other states, what has happened, and I think we just need to find out all we can before we decide.
Okay, so staff's going to need some direction, so you should probably put that into a motion.
Okay, I would move to direct staff to be, look into it, begin the process so that we could be done by March 1st, I don't know how to put that into.
So does that motion include direction to staff to file an application for an amendment to the development code which would make it unlawful to dispense marijuana if such dispensation is in violation of federal law?
Didn't you hear me say that?
That's what I thought, okay.
Yeah, I did. Thank you.
No, it would be limited, it will be any drug.
Well, any drug or anything?
No, I'm not going to, I really urge you not to go quite so far as anything, do we want to get, for example, into the immigration debate?
Well, no, what I, what my point is, when you say something that is, that is against federal law, there, there are undoubtedly things we're not thinking about that are against federal law that might be happening, and we may or may not want to take that gigantic bite.
Right, I would suggest, again, at this point, as I, as I worked on this today trying to anticipate this, the language I was proposing is, "No parcel of land or structure may be used for the dispensation or delivery of any drug," drug, "if such dispensation or delivery is or would be in violation of state or federal law."
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd second it.
Okay, all right, second, all right, any discussion?
So you are setting us up to be potentially the tip of the spear for lawsuits, et cetera, et cetera, you're willing to take that on, of course, you're getting paid, so I guess that's okay.
Well, this is not, please don't misunderstand, this is not my recommendation to you.
This is, if, if the direction is that you want to achieve this outcome, then I would
recommend you do it through the development code, and if you are to do it through the development code, I would recommend that you take the steps necessary to have it in place before people open businesses. It becomes much, we become much more vulnerable to arguments of regulatory taking if we are shutting down businesses which are already operating by adopting a new law, and so I'm just trying to minimize the damage if that's what you choose.
If I could add to back up Jim's point, this was not initiated by staff, this was a council-initiated measure, and Jim has been responsive and is in no way, in my opinion, you know, pushing this.
And just because this happens, this gets us ready for what you find out next week, so we are not behind the eight ball.
Well, I'm not going to find out any answers next week, what, what often happens in these meetings, I'm anticipating, this is going to be a meeting of one side of the coin, and there's going to be a certain amount of, you know, yes, we can, it's not going to be a meeting of both sides of the issue, and it will be useful in terms of giving a chance to vet what I am proposing with others. If there are problems I'm not thinking of, I would like to hear them. And again, the one, one beauty of this process, just as Wes has said, is because the land use process is a long and very public process, you have lots of opportunities to hear other ideas in this process, and you are not, by starting the process, locking yourself into a conclusion. But, again, Counselor Kopczynski, you know, this is where I'm between the rock and the hard place. I'm not a voting member of this body, I do my best to give effect to whatever direction you provide, and so I have been thinking in advance in anticipation that you might make this decision, how would I best be able to do what you want to do with the least amount of expense and risk?
I'll be voting yes on this motion, and the main reason is I am curious to get more information, and like Jim just said, it will be an opportunity to hear from both sides, get more information and so forth. Initially, I have some heartburn with regulating a legal substance, at least in the eyes of the state of Oregon, but moving down that road, I had a good conversation with Captain Heinrich of the, of the police department, and he shared some different perspectives that got me thinking a little bit differently, and that's kind of the whole process, is different perspectives, get as much information we can, and I think make a more informed decision.
Okay, all right, okay, anything else?
I still think we're going to be held up to ridicule and a lot of negative publicity.
Sure. I think this is kind of an issue that it's going to be half for and half against, it's one of those issues, so never please them all on this one.
Call the question.
Okay, all right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
I think it was Olson and Kopczynski was the no, or do you want to roll call?
Is that correct that Olson and Kopczynski said no?
I wasn't.
That would be four yes and two no.
Yep, okay, all right, motion carried. Okay, is that it, Bessie?
Yes.
That was your item, okay, Bill, anything?
No, thanks.
Hey, Dick?
No.
Okay, Rich?
On this same subject, I guess people have given their opinions, and there are things about this that bother me, like Bill, I mean, what happens behind somebody's closed door happens behind their closed door, and generally that's not my business, but if somebody says something is medicine, I'd like to believe that, and I know for some things, it is in fact medicine. If you, if you have glaucoma, you have eye pressure, that kind of stuff, but if you're going to sell it, and I've had the discussion with, with council that, well, gee, if we say yes, then we're kind of getting on that board, and he assured me, no, maybe we're not, but I can't help thinking that when you go into court, somebody might be looking over your shoulder anyway. But if we're going to have something that calls itself medicine, it should be, what's the, what's the reaction between lisinopril and marijuana? Anybody know? Does anybody selling it know? I mean, if you are going to be giving something to people that, you know, they're coming through your door, one, that door had better be ADA-approved, I mean, they, they're sick, they need to be able to get in there. People should not be given just a cheap little place to go, but if they don't know what the reactions are between various things, if, well, what's the strength of it? Do we know? Do they know? Shouldn't they know? I mean, it just asks more and more questions of me, and I get more and more antsy as to there's a big difference between letting something happen and having someone walk up and say, "I want to do this, give me a rubber stamp," and I will not give that rubber stamp. Now, I don't know if I need to or not, but the fact remains, I'm not going there, not unless, not unless there are some things that, that can be done to make sure that it's safe and it's yada, 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 yada. Anyway, that's my say.
Right, okay.
Short opposite tack, those processes are being worked on as we speak, and I'm fully concur, concur with what the state will come down with, whatever it may be, I may not agree with all of it, but in general, I think there's just way too much fear mongering about the, about the issue, and I have no qualms about saying if somebody has a medical need for it, they can walk in and be able to acquire it easier than they're being forced to jump through hoops now to have it happen.
As long as they don't die, it's not a problem.
Well, you know, it's Oregon's biggest cash crop, seems to me that for those who want to use it, it ought to be available, safe.
Why not heroin?
Regulated and so forth, and this is, this is a step against that that we're taking, I think.
Lloyd, you had a couple items?
Yes, I do, I actually have three.
Now we can get back to real business.
Hopefully not as contentious as the last one. Just information, tomorrow morning, we're having our first joint meeting of the Corvallis Area MPO and the Albany Area MPO. I met today with the chair of their MPO group, Hal Bronner, and our objective is to take a look at what are those issues that affect both areas for the POs that are in common, where we can find some common ground and mutual support, and I think that there will be many in the future, not the least of which is our loop system, since we now receive money in a different way for the loop, and we talked about when we formed the MPO, that we would be, it's funded in a different way, and we'd have, find a way of governance of it, where before the city of Albany was basically in control of it, you know, what's the role and purpose of the current loop commission, and so we're going to, that'll be one item on the agenda, the other is dealing with the ultimate output of the rail discussion going on, regardless of which alternative is selected, what are those other issues that address regional transportation in conjunction with the decision on rail, and seeing if we can find common ground. So we're, we're looking to identify where we agree, not where we disagree, and we think that that will give us a position in the future to be more influential in some of the decision-making and maybe in some of the funding. So that's our first meeting. My expectation is we will probably set a process, we will be doing that biannually between the two groups, and making sure we have information exchange. Second, I'd like to distribute some information here, this is relative to the Public Safety Committee that was previously discussed by council prior to the election. Counselor Killen brought up the need to have an advisory committee, it was predicated upon the passage of the measure, well, we all know the measure didn't pass, I've been giving considerable thought to that since that time.
Excuse me, I, I'm going to intervene if I may for just a minute and clarify that it was not predicated on the, the measure that the council, or the motion that the council made was to form an advisory commission, it did not. It spoke to whether or not the bond was passed.
It only spoke to when it would start meeting.
Right.
Okay, my apologies.
Sorry, it's important to me.
But I have been giving considerable thought to, you know, what do we do and when do we do it? I took it upon myself to think maybe, how do we, how do we detach ourselves from some of this, because as I look back at some of the reasons that were publicly stated that for failure, dealt a lot with trust, lack of specifics, maybe some lack of public involvement, and some uncertainty of the needs. The needs don't go away with the defeat of the measure, in my opinion, the needs are going to be there into the future, so the question is, how do we constructively address that subject? I believe it'd be unwise if we, as the council, took the leadership role to take the issue back out to the public, so I would propose a slightly revised process where we would have a similar committee that we would appoint the co-chairs of, or the leadership. I have contacted Senator Morris and retired Sheriff Dave Burright, and each of them have agreed to co-chair a committee that would be formed, and they would, the chairs would actually select the members based upon a makeup of citizens at large and disciplines that would be involved in decision-making for public facilities, like architects, engineers, you know, contractors, maybe somebody from another governmental agency, people who've been involved in construction management. The committee would be looking at all the material we've looked at, all the prior reports, all the data that we've seen to reach the conclusions we had, they would take a look at the proposed citing that we had selected, they would interview the department heads to reestablish the needs, and they would take, and define any other information that they would need. The city council would not be taking an active role, we would have an ability to attend all the meetings, they would be public meetings, but the approach is to basically have an independent review, if you will, by a cross-section of our community with recommendations back to us on the needs or revised needs as they found, potential financing methods and timing of taking the issues back before our citizenry. I think with that, I think it puts us in a position of potentially rebuilding some of that trust that I think some people have expressed some question about. It involves the cross-section of our community in helping make that recommendation, and it will address defining the needs in a timely way so that the, the actual needs of the fire department and the police department have a chance of being met. I personally do not have a problem with the committee coming up and taking a look at it, if they came up with a different set of recommendations, if they're based upon factual consideration, I'm okay with that. I'm not, if they come up with a different way with financing it, I'm okay with that, if, if it results in meeting the need. So what I'd be asking council to do would be to endorse this approach and confirm Senator Morris and Dave Burright as co-chairs, and then they would be selecting committee members probably in January and getting the process started.
So moved.
Okay, that's a motion, second, okay. So Floyd, I forgot to ask you, when you ran this by me yesterday, and is this going to be coming up with an actual design of the building?
I, I.
Or is it just more of the logistics over it, but not as an actual?
If, if the committee felt that the preliminary design was necessary in order to provide accurate cost estimates, and it would be appropriate to help convince the people on what it looked like and how it fit, then they could request us to have the consultants prepare that preliminary design. Our role, our role, the city's role, primarily staff, would be to facilitate the meeting, to provide information as they requested, our two chiefs would be available for all resource input.
So what we're going to, part of this process, you know, what we're going to have to be looking at is if it's going to be coming up with a design, we're going to, we need to get public input process on that, because other words, if we don't get an acceptable design of the downtown fire station, then we're going, you'd be completing this process and then all of a sudden get a very big, strong vocal group of people that want to make sure that's a good design, that's going to fit in with the historic district, so.
Well, let's assume that's a request that the committee. Well, let's assume that's a request that the committee makes, that we have a preliminary design in the downtown fire station. Then I think along with that, we would say, we believe that it ought to be consistent with the historic districts downtown, and the instructions we'd be giving to the architect would be, that's what you, you prepare. So I think they could provide the detail at the time that they make the request.
Right.
And we can build in the process for a public review.
I think it just needs to be spelled out right at the beginning, because it's, because that is something that can really kind of hold up the overall processes. All of a sudden, this committee might not really realize the historic significance of how that, you know, that fire station fits in within the downtown area. Then if they come up with a design, then all of a sudden, we're going with opposition. We don't, we need to make sure we prevent that, make sure it's a good fit. So, just so it's part of that process.
I would suspect that our chief and our city manager would make sure that that position was represented. I would not want to, at this point, tell anybody, "I want you to come up with a design that's gonna look like X." I think that would be hamstringing them in their process.
Right.
But, if they get to that point, then I think it's appropriate to say, "There are some considerations that we think ought to be on the table for your request to us."
Okay, yeah. Needs to be upfront, so. Mm-hmm. Yeah, Phil?
I think we need to just give them a clean slate and, and let them start the process, get their members, like Floyd said, they're gonna be public meetings. That, that's an important component of it, but, but I'm, I'm not in favor of saying, "You're the co-chairs, and by the way, here's the first thing you gotta take care of." That, that's, that's part of the problem that I think got us into this position, and we need to just step back, let them go through the process. You know, they're all gonna be intelligent people and most likely come to the process. I don't think they're gonna come back with, you know, some modern three-story building downtown. And again, I'm being redundant here, but we'll all have an opportunity to attend the meeting and, and-
Heavy emphasis that what we've asked, what we're asking of this committee, what it was originally designed to be, is an advisory body that makes recommendations to you. Ultimately, you folks have to make the decisions. They can't spend money. They can only recommend how you spend.
Right.
And they might come back with the conclusion of, if these are the things we would suggest, and one of them is a preliminary design. And then council can act on it.
Yeah. Rich first, then Bessie, yeah.
I think another thing that's very important is to not give them time constraints. 'Cause, you know, rather, "Let's do this right, let's not do it quick." That's part of the problem we had before, is, is the time constraint that we had. And, you know, those two people, and the people that they would pick, I'm sure would, you know, be on the ball. It's, I don't think there's a question that there would be any dilly-dallying going on. But I mean, to not give them another codicil, "No, you gotta do it quick," because we want, you know, whatever.
Yeah, I was gonna say Floyd, I told you wrong when we were talking about it today, that Sheriff Burright was not the sheriff when the jail was built. Sheriff Martinak was. But I think Dave was sheriff long enough, and he used the facility long enough, that I think that he would be good to, to help look into it and, you know, give idea, good ideas.
That's good clarification, Miss, because after, my memory was that he was not the sheriff, but he was a representative of the Sheriff's Department in the vacuum of the process.
Probably, 'cause he's probably under sheriff.
Deputy Lieutenant who was in charge of the project.
And there are other members of the community that could serve that co-chair just as well. But these two people, I think, are well-known, well-respected. I don't perceive that they have a bias. They are experienced. You know, Frank is, as being a senator, certainly knows group process. He knows how to work through committees. He comes out of the building trades. He knows how buildings are built. You know, Dave has been involved in, in the jail process. He knows this community, and I think they're well-respected, and they won't be seen as anybody's men. They'll give an independent analysis.
I agree. I agree.
Okay, all right. You got a motion?
Okay.
Okay, all right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, all right.
Thank you very much. I will notify those two tomorrow that they have some task ahead of them.
Okay. Give me time.
Yeah, perhaps.
As long as they're watching.
The second item is, item that was addressed by Scott Lutman. At a work session last month or a month before last, council directed me and either Rich or Bessie to meet with staff and Scott to see if there's a resolution to other requests dealing with the Blue Ox. For background, remember that the city has been dealing with the Blue Ox as a utility issue for many, many years. The prior owner went bankrupt. The bank was in the process of taking the facility over. They contracted with Scott to operate it on a contractual basis. He was looking at buying the property and how to control cost. And he came to us and said, "Is there a way to address the utility billing process?" Because utility bills were representing a disproportionate cash impact upon the business. And we didn't know, but we wanted to take a look. So, Rich and I met with staff, and then we met with Mr. Lutman and his, his office staff. And we came down to bottom line of agreeing to some principles of agreement. Again, as a little background, the Blue Ox was originally developed in the community. It was on a well for water supply that qualified as a community water supply, and that's a designation by the state of Oregon on, I forgot the thresholds. Whenever you service so many people, you have to meet all the regulatory requirements, do all the testing, you have to have the inspections, and you have to have appropriate ongoing tests and certification of operators. Subsequently, the facility was expanded. They hooked on to city water in order to get fire flow and additional domestic supply, and they're hooked to the city sewer. The principles of agreement are in two sections. One is water, and we, the agreement would be that they could reactivate their well. They would meter their well to city standards. They would operate the well in order to try to ensure that any water coming from the city would only be that necessary if there was a fire on site, or if their well was insufficient to meet the domestic needs.
And they pay for it.
And they would pay, they would continue to pay the monthly charge for their two-inch water meter connection to us, and they would pay a consumptive charge for any water consumed through that meter. And their sewer bill on the consumption side would be based upon the sum of their well discharge and any water through the city meters. The other piece is, the Blue Ox is operated in a manner that there are three classes of customers out there. Customers that simply park and store their vehicles, customers that are there on a long-term basis, and customers there that are on a quickly rollover basis. Our current sewer billing is based upon the assumption that all 150 spaces are available for people to hook up to the sewer on. The question to Scott and his managers was, so how many, how many units are actually just there for storage, not hooked up to utilities? Currently, that number was around 12, but it may fluctuate up to 20 or some number. We discussed having them pick the number that they want to have available for onsite storage, but not connection to utilities. And then staff would work with Mr. Lutman and his group to actually physically plug off those sewer connections. We would then reduce the sewer billing proportionally. So if they plugged off 10, instead of being charged for 150, they'd be charged for 140. There's no sewer consumption, there's no need for them to pay for what they don't use. That number could be reviewed on an annual basis. So if the business changed and, you know, all tourism went down, and he wanted to increase the storage, he could block off more. And on the other hand, if more up and down the freeway traffic increased, he wanted to take those 10 or 12 units and put them back on, then we would readjust and take the service charge back up. That would be done once a year only in conjunction. The advantage of this approach is, it doesn't require us to alter our utility billing structure, but it does address the ability to use the system and to accommodate the needs out there. One of the underlying elements for me is, I saw the continuation of the operation of the Blue Ox as a community asset. I looked at the other side, what would happen if we did nothing and Mr. Lutman didn't proceed and the bank just shut it down? We would ultimately lose some tax revenue, because I think the assessed value on the property would go down. We would lose the amount that is currently going into the utility system. We would lose the ability to address the needs of the commuting tourisms. We would not be able to complement the use at the Expo Center. So I think this is a real asset to the community, and it's, it's an economic component. So with all of that said, I think the approach would be, I would recommend that we direct staff to prepare an agreement and authorize the city manager to execute that agreement based upon these principles that Scott has agreed to. Rich, I want a few, some comments?
Yes, there are, it gives him, because that place has never made money. When they, once they, once they increased the size of it, they have never had it full, ever. But if we don't have, they're the only ones that have available spaces for the folks off the freeway. There are a couple three in a couple other places, but I mean, as far as you got, you got something happening at the Expo, you know, a big deal. Besides the ones that are happening at the Expo, the, the ones that can park around back, you know, they, they're stuck going to KOA or, you know, miles out of town. We then don't get meals from that as easily. This gives him the opportunity to get into it, to get his costs in line with what he can manage. Using his well, it's gonna be very quickly apparent to him how much. If he has a leaky system, he's gonna fix them, because he gets to pay for it. And we're not out any, any money to speak of. At the, at 10 or 12 or 20 or 30, as far as that goes, yeah, we get less money, but he's still in business, and he wouldn't be not very long down the road. It does not do anything to other customers. There's no, nothing they can hang their hat on and say, "Well gee, you made a cutout just for him." No, not really. The others are full, or they're a different kind of a customer, so. I was very pleased with the way this turned out. There was, there was a lot of worrying going on beforehand, and, and it seemed to just kind of fall in line, and that was with the help of Jim and, and Mark. I think we did a good job.
Phil?
So, again, in determining the sewer rate, you were going to measure the water used from the well?
Correct.
And then, would it be a formula similar to what you see on a residential-
Yes.
Hookup that you monitor that, well, let me finish. You monitor the, the water use in three or four winter months, and then that determines the sewer rate?
For commercial, they don't go on winter average, and commercial goes on monthly.
So, do they use well water for irrigation of plants and lawns and stuff in the summer?
They're currently, their current usage is domestic water through a meter that comes off a goldfish. They use it for irrigation and all other purposes, the washroom and, and individual units. Now, but simply replacing that, it puts, he is the supplier of the water, rather than us being the supplier of the water, the, the consumption for the sewer bill would be the sum of his well production and, and whatever came through our meter, if any.
Then, is there also the ability to, for a trailer, mobile home, what, not a mobile home, but an RV to dump their holding tank?
He shared with us that he currently uses an empty space, and people pull up and dump to that. Our, our rate structure says, I forgot the number, but it's so many cents per gallon to drop. I don't know that we've ever collected that, and we recorded that from that facility before.
We actually don't allow dump stations. That was changed in the past.
Oh, it's not any longer in there? He, he sees that as a complication, and he's willing to not provide that service.
There is a dump station.
So somebody comes in for the night, they can hook up to water, they can dump. They may or may not use much water, but that's just the way it is. Maybe that's offset by the fact that you're gonna use it or measure it year-round and not discount for irrigation.
I think that's the same as it is today, as it would be tomorrow. There's no change in that approach.
Okay, thank you.
Bessie?
So, Mark, what, you just said that the dump station's no longer allowed?
Yeah, we don't have a, a rate structure or the, we're not set up for dump stations, correct. We're dealing with the Knox Butte RV park with that same situation. So we're working with them.
I do know that some cities have a rate for dump station on a per gallon dump basis.
Yeah, actually, the city used to have a dump station at the treatment plant. When the treatment plant was upgraded, the decision was made not to incorporate a dump station there. Now, that is something, as we look at, at this issue, that that may be something not only for RVs, but maybe septic haulers, you know, it's a potential revenue source for the city. Obviously, there's a capital investment to facilitate that, but that is an idea we've started kicking around at the staff level.
Yes, 'cause that's a service that would, I mean, it, it's needed.
We used to have a free one at Timberland Park, before we ever did, rebuilt Timberland Park, before the fairgrounds went in, but there used to be one there on the north end of that park that was a free dump station.
Yeah, I think, I think there is actually one at the fairgrounds also, and they're, my understanding, the agreement with them is, they would allow people to dump there who have been there for an event and, and parked their RV. They're not letting the general public come through and, and use that, though.
Do they have connections along that back fence?
I don't believe so.
I think so.
I don't know if they have power and water, but...
Yeah, I, I think that subject of an RV dump is one that's universal to our entire system, and we need to have, independent of this. Because I do believe that there needs to be a place in our community where RVs can dump, in, in a way that we know who's been there, when they've been there, how much they're dumping, and we collect the appropriate fee for it.
Yeah, 'cause Lebanon has one by their park, I can't remember, off of Grant Street or whatever and stuff, and, I mean-
If, if an appropriate RV dump is not within a community, people will find ways to get rid of their waste anyhow.
Exactly.
And we need to find the proper way to deal with that waste.
Yes.
What's the next step in the process, then? Well, the recommendation I would have would be to instruct staff to develop the agreement consistent with these principles of agreement that Scott's initialed, and then authorize the city manager to execute that.
Make that in a second.
I'm sorry? I make that as a motion.
Second. Okay, and there's a second? So which one are you second? We got a dual second, so, okay. All right, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried.
The only other observation, I've visited Corvallis today, and, you know, there's been commentary about the snow and the removal, there's lack thereof. Our downtown streets are in much better condition on state highways and in city-controlled streets than our neighbors to the west.
They also got a lot more snow.
Yeah. They got a lot, twice as snow over there.
Yeah. I think our crews have been doing a, a very good job. They've been out 24/7 since Friday morning sanding. We've put down over 130 tons of sand, 270 person-hours just in sanding. We've only received about five complaints or, or requests for specific sanding. We did sand the, the state highway bridges here, and also the state highway all the way to North Albany Road. And we had eight traffic signs that have been damaged. Then on our, the water crew side, we had 93 calls for service since Saturday with frozen pipes, three hydrants that have been broken. So, both those, those crews have been working very hard and, and tough. So, both those, those crews have been working very hard in tough, tough conditions. So, I think under the circumstances, they've done a great job.
Can you send somebody over to pick up about 10,000 gallons of water? I had, I had this much water in my office over the weekend and got cold feet as I was literally scooping it out the front door.
Oh, wow.
Your floor's clean?
No, actually, it's not terrible. I got the phone call, literally, I'm singing Jubilate Deo at church, and I, as I'm singing, Albany police are calling me.
Oh, wow. Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, but guys are coming out of the front of your building.
Yeah, I think there's kind of a March report, you know, the information I saw that came from the Fire Department and PD about the increased number of calls and assistance to the citizen during this time. I think staff's to be complimented for-
I do, too.
Adverse conditions, jumping out there and getting the job done.
Yeah. And tell staff on behalf of the City Council, we really appreciate the service and really commend them and feel for them for being out in those harsh conditions, too. So, not easy, but, yeah, thank you, Mark. And you had a good crew, too.
You know, I know I'm biased, but having been a staff member, sometimes we forget the value of staff when everything's going well. Where the real value of staff shows is when things go south or haywire. How well they respond, how quickly they get there, what do they do, how do they interface with the citizenry? And I think our staff's done a good job.
I do, too.
For providing those quality services that, yes, we do want people to place a value on it, so we really appreciate it, so.
Okay, that was it Floyd, and me and I don't have anything else. Wes?
No, I don't think I have.
Okay. Staff, staff have anything else? Okay. Our next meeting will be after the holidays, so that's a work session January 6, and regular session is January 8. And with that, we adjourn.